Once you click Live Meetings, it'll ask you to log in again. I talk fast, so if I am telling me, I'll follow them. And then after you log in, you should be looking for today's meeting. I'm not sure what it's titled because I'm not logged in. Mickey can help with that.
Maps for Citizen Advisory Board Special Meeting for 8/6. And we can see.
Thank you, Mickey.
And we can also see Mr. Pace.
And we see Mr. Mark Stonecifer now. Well, we see him at the wall anyway.
And he's already in Prime Gov.
Excellent.
Good morning.
Are you good now, Monique?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you very much for your patience. Anybody else need some assistance?
Mr. Leanders, could you make Councilman Stonecifer co-host, please?
This is Francis. I just wanted to say hello to Tricia Everest. And Tricia, it doesn't look like you have a microphone. Alan, can you talk to her?
Tricia, this is out there. She's connecting now. Now you're muted, ma'am. I need you to unmute.
I'm in the room with Kim Garrett. And she's not able to access her screen, so I didn't want to double the audio.
Okay, I get it. Thank you.
We will share her screen to share and talk. It's nice to see you all.
Nice to see you.
I'm seeing you, Barrett.
Good morning. This is Ron Norick. Am I on camera? Can you tell?
No.
Well, I'm not sure what to do to make it work. Ask you to start your video, okay?
Click the button. There you are.
There you are.
Hello, Mayor Norick.
It's amazing technology, isn't it?
We've come a long way, baby.
Tell me about it. Yeah, I'm just getting old.
Mayor Norick, are you logged into Prime Gov yet?
No, he will not be, Alan. He is Speaker.
So Mark, all the voting members in attendance?
I do not see Ms. Hernandez here.
Okay.
Or Russell Pace. Those are the only two.
Russell is in Prime Gov, so you may need to touch base with him about logging into Zoom.
Okay, yeah, he just called me. Okay.
I just made Ms. Hernandez a panelist.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Let us know if you need any help getting logged into Prime Gov to vote.
Thank you very much.
Teresa.
Yes.
Did David mention to you that I would like to be moved up before the financial report? Because I have a, I've got to leave town.
Yes, he did.
Thank you much. Okay.
We're too close, and we may want to go with you, but.
I doubt that I'm going to Des Moines.
Councilman Stonecifer, did we do a sound check on you?
Hello, Francis. How are you today?
Okay, good morning. Great. Thank you.
Brenda Hernandez, were you able to get logged into Prime Gov?
Yes, yes.
Excellent.
I'm under the Oklahoma City Meeting Viewer and then on the Agenda Items.
Okay, Mickey, has she signed in to Prime Gov?
Yes, it appears that we have all of the voting members in Prime Gov, but I'm not seeing Mr. Pace in Zoom yet.
Okay. Chairman Crook, it is now 10:31, and you can start your script, and Mr. Pace will join us shortly.
Okay. Thank you so much. Good morning. Thank you so much for joining us for the Maps for Citizens Advisory Board Video Conference Meeting today. We have a few announcements to make regarding the video conference meeting. If the video conference is discontinued at any time during the meeting, the meeting shall be stopped and reconvened once the video/audio connection is restored. If communications are unable to be restored within 15 minutes, items remaining for consideration will be continued at 11:30 later today via video conference. The agenda and documents are located on okc.gov. To speak on certain agenda item, please call in advance. Or well, now, at the beginning of the meeting, please call 405-297-3467 or text your request at the beginning of the meeting to 405-205-4195. We ask that you include your name, the agenda item, and the reason that you would like to speak. Please submit your request prior to the beginning of the meeting or receiving your request after your item has been considered. City staff will attempt to submit requests received during the meeting to process, to proceed with them during the meeting. To speak under comments by board, staff, and citizens, please call 405-297-3467 or text 405-205-4195. Again, list your name, address, phone number, and the subject on which you would like to address the board. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Again, thank you all so much for being here. We're, we're all learning how to use our technology, and I'm confident that as we get more familiar and have more meetings together, it's going to become more second nature. So the first order of business is to approve the minutes of the July 2nd, 2020 Maps for Citizens Advisory Board Special Meeting.
Move approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye, or please vote. And just a reminder that you may have to press Escape on your keyboard to see your voting buttons.
Mark, did we get you?
Yeah, just put me approved. I'm having trouble. Let me, I've got to do something. Just, I approve. Sorry.
Okay. The motion passes. Thank you so much. So at this time, we need to re-order the agenda slightly, and I am going to ask former Mayor Ron Norick to visit with us. We thought that it would be real beneficial for those people that are newer to our community, those people that were not in our community when the MAPS program started. And even as a reminder for those of us that have been in our city for a long time, the origination as well as the evolution of the program. We're very honored to have former Mayor Ron Norick with us to talk with us a little bit about how this whole project got started. Mayor Norick.
Thank you, Teresa. First, let me just congratulate all of you for agreeing to serve on the MAPS for Advisory. You will find that you will have fun. It will be difficult, and it will be long. I think the original MAPS Committee on MAPS went either 12 or 15 years, so just kind of hold on. But I'm really pleased that all of you. Unfortunately, that we can't meet in person, so I can meet you personally, but I think you will very much enjoy, enjoy your service. Let me give you just a brief history of why MAPS 1 was put together and why it was started. I was elected to office in 1987. And when I came into office, the city was, just was going through a period where sales tax was decreasing since the oil bust and the banking bust in the early 80s, actually '83, '82, '83. Sales tax revenues of the city were going down. And I was not in favor of asking the citizens to vote to increase taxes, but I was in favor of is trying to create new jobs. Because the only way that I figured that we could help our sales tax collection, which is the main source of funds for the city, is to really create jobs. And so as I started working in the, in the office in '87, '88 and going on, I figured out that the city didn't have a capital plan. We had not passed a bond issue since 1976. The next bond issue we did pass was in 1989. And I knew that if we didn't work with the infrastructure of our city, we were just, we were going absolutely the wrong direction. During that time in the 80s, there was a number of companies around the country, big companies, that were looking to make expansions in their manufacturing or whatever, whatever their business was. And I worked with, with our city staff in the chamber to try to, to encourage some of these businesses to come to Oklahoma City because I knew we had a great, we had great people, great labor force. We had land. We had good water supply. We had what I thought was everything anybody would need. Well, as time went on, that became apparent that that really wasn't what all these companies were looking for. And we, I worked on several projects with a company called Micron, which was a chip manufacturer. And, and all of these companies I'm going to mention, we were in the finalists. We were one of the last three cities to be considered. So we were, we were getting close, but we just, you know, weren't getting there. Worked with the Alliant, if you recall, or you may not recall them. I'm saying Alliant Airport that's in Port Worth. We were in the finalists for that. That was Ross Perot's big project that American Airlines put in a huge maintenance center. Also worked with Governor Bellman here to, with American Airlines to try to get some, that facility plus anything else here in Oklahoma City. Ended up getting some jobs for Tulsa, which I'm very pleased with, but still did not, did not get here. Also, we worked with the, the federal, it was called the Federal Group that does all the payrolls for all the military. And they were called DEPIS, and they were wanting to put a facility in, and they were looking at Oklahoma very strong. They ended up not doing anything on it. But again, we spent time working on that. And the final one that, that we really spent a lot of time, I spent over a year working on, was United Airlines. And United wanted to build a facility at our airport. We have a wonderful airport with a lot of land on the east and west side, but this facility was going to be located on the east side of, of the runway at Real Rogers Airport. And the idea was to provide 5,000 jobs. It was a billion-dollar investment in infrastructure and building by, by United Airlines. We worked over a year on that project. I met with several of the United personnel in Chicago, which is where their headquarters were, and worked with them, did bond issues, did a number of things that we needed to do to get this done. And as we got farther along in the process, it became apparent to me that we, we needed to do something to put us in just that little better position. The, the three finalists was Louisville, Kentucky, Oklahoma City, and Indianapolis, Indiana. And it was, we were in the, the final group. And I said, you know, maybe we could do something to help them. And so I put a proposition before the voters of Oklahoma City and asked them to approve, approve a one-cent sales tax for three years temporary, would only be initiated if United agreed to come to Oklahoma City and build that facility. The money that we would raise off of that, which was, if I recall, was somewhere around $100 million, would have been used for bricks and mortar. We would not have written United the check. It would have been used for bricks and mortar to put that whole process together. So about, and the voters did approve that. It actually surprised me, and I think it shocked United Airlines, but the voters approved that if United would build their facility here, we would impose a one-cent sales tax for three years and use that for part of the bricks and mortar on their facility. And about a week before they made the final decision, the United Airlines had Oklahoma City, Louisville, and Indianapolis in Chicago at their headquarters and basically had us all in different rooms and really were trying to say, what else you, you're going to give? And I said, we're not giving anything else. We've done everything we could do. I was convinced, and, and even the head of the, the group that was making the selection agreed with me, we had the best proposal. We had the best financial proposal, the best deal of any of the cities. So I said, you know, we're, we're not going to. Louisville backed out that night, so it left Indianapolis and us. And about a week later, the United Board met to make their decision. And I got a call that afternoon from Stephen Wolf, who was the CEO, Chairman of United Airlines. And he said, Mayor, you did a great job on your presentation. Well, as soon as he said that, I knew we had lost. Because if we'd have won, he would have said, Mayor, call your press. We're going to have a press conference and announce it. Well, we were devastated. I mean, the city, we had spent so much time with myself, the city, the chamber, a number of people working on this. We were just crushed. It was just, you know, it, it was just very, very devastating. This was approximately 1990 is about when that happened. A little side note, United never did, never did build all the facilities in Indianapolis, never did provide the 5,000 jobs. Today, and I think it's still true, and they may have got out of it by now, but it left a huge debt, a debt for the state of Indiana and the city of Indianapolis. So as they say, that bullet went by my ear, and that was probably the best bullet that ever went by my ear when they said that. Because it, it basically said, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be talking to me now had that, had that happened. There's no doubt about that. So about a year later, my, my son's a race car driver. In fact, he still is. And I was in Indianapolis and by myself, I had my rent car. And I went downtown to Indianapolis because I was trying to figure out, how did Indianapolis, what is it that they have that Oklahoma City doesn't have or didn't have? So I drove downtown about noon, and there were people on the streets. There were people sitting on outside restaurants. There were hotels. There, it was basically alive. And right then, I said, that's it. Our city is dead. Stephen Wolf made the right decision when he, when he went to Indianapolis. Oklahoma City didn't have a place that his employees, his key people that he was going to move down here, wanted to live. And I said, we have got to quit. I told myself, and they should told myself, we have got to quit going after these companies. We're, I'm tired of being the bridesmaid on everything we go after. We need to do something for ourselves. And if the citizens of Oklahoma City were willing to tax themselves for United, maybe they'll tax themselves to help themselves. And I said, it's basically, the whole issue is quality of life. Where do you want to raise your kids? Where do you want to live? Where do you want to work? And it's all of those issues. In the, around 90, in the 80s, in the early 90s, you could shoot a cannon down Main Street of Oklahoma City, and you weren't going to hit anybody. There just was nobody there. Our city was dying. We had to do something. And so we just basically had to pull ourselves up, and that's exactly what we did. So I formed a number of subcommittees to look at what we needed to do in the sports world, the, the entertainment world, the hospitality world, all of those things, to try to put together a plan that we could take, take to the voters. Again, based upon that one sin, I thought, well, I think we can, maybe the, maybe the people will do this. Maybe the people will do this. One of the key ingredients back then, and it's probably different today, but back then was the only area of town that the citizens really all co-ed around was downtown. And that's the reason that I really, really made a strong emphasis to move the ballpark from the fairgrounds to downtown. The library is downtown, Civic Center Music Hall. We renovated. We put the canal downtown. The whole idea was people viewed downtown Oklahoma City as their downtown. Not only Oklahoma City, but Edmond and a lot of the suburbs still viewed downtown as their town. And that, that was just extreme, extremely important. So we put this, the program together. And the key ingredients, as I said, what I was concerned about is how, how much money can we raise? How long can the tax be? And I felt like five years was the maximum that we could ask anybody to tax themselves. Otherwise, I think they would have thought it was a permanent tax. So we stuck on five years. We estimated that the general fund revenue for a one-cent sales tax would be around $237 million. So we, we ended up selecting these projects based upon that budget and put together the program. Once I got that all put together, then I asked the council to form, I formed a committee with the council. At, up to this time, I had kept them somewhat in the dark, not because I didn't want them to know what we're doing, but I did not want to read about what we were thinking about in the paper or hearing about in the news because I, we were talking about a lot of different things. And I, I was real concerned that if certain things made it into the news world, it could probably kill the deal. So we kept it really very tightly until I appointed a council committee. Then we had public hearings and got the input from the cit, from the citizens. Then the council put it on the ballot for the December election in 1993. We started running polls in October of that year. Of the nine projects, there were only two projects that were anywhere close to being 50% approved by the voters. That was the river and the library were the only two things. Everything else was in the 20% to 30% approval. This is two months before an election. Well, I was, I won't say pressure put on me, but there was a lot of conversation for me to delay the election to. We had already set the election, but to postpone the election and move it to the spring of 1994. And I said, no, we, I'm not going to do that. My election, if, if I wanted to rerun for mayor, my election would have been in the spring of 94. And I said, if the people are not willing to do this, then I won't run for mayor because they need to have new leadership. Obviously, I'm not the right guy to be in the office. So I said, no, we're, we're going to have this election on, on December. Another critical issue, which today, I don't, I don't think because of state law you could do, we listed the nine projects, and it was an up or down on all nine. I said, we cannot do this piecemeal. Because the way the polling was going, we might have approved one or two, and we'd have lost all the rest of them. I said, is it all or none? I said, the citizens of Oklahoma City, it's either all or none. Take it. Luckily, we passed 83.9, or excuse me, 53.9% was the vote. It was a tough election. Today, I think you'll have a tough time finding that 40% that said they voted no. And I think most people realize that probably MAPS has been one of the best thing that's really happened to us. And now, as you ladies and gentlemen are involved, you're now in MAPS 4. And is there going to be a MAPS 5 or 6? It all depends on what you do. If you do exactly what the voters ask you to do, the, the city itself does what it's supposed to do, then there'll be a MAPS 5. If not, it's over with. And so I made sure that we did everything that we said we, we were going to do, build all the facilities that we said we were going to build and make sure that the citizens could see that. It was really, it was really very simple process. And the whole deal was MAPS was for the whole city. That was the whole idea of it. Communicate to the voters. I talked to every group that would listen to me for three months for this, for this election. It was, I emphasized it was whole and not the parts. It was really simple. It's one vote. And leadership was 100% committed. I was 100% committed. The council was 100% committed. And the original amount of money that MAPS 1 raised was $350 million. Our budget was 237. We raised 350. And to date, the last numbers I've seen, the private investment is some, somewhere north of $4 billion, four with a B on it, $4 billion. And now, my sons moved back to Oklahoma. A lot of kids are moving back. Young people are staying. You know, we have, we had 399 hotel rooms. That was the Sheridan Hotel when I was in office. We now have 2,700 downtown. It's just been phenomenal, far beyond what I, I envisioned, far beyond what I envisioned. And I'm just happy to be a part of it. Teresa, that's a very brief story of MAPS.
And Mayor, we could not be more indebted to the work that you did, the vision that you had, and the ongoing legacy. Councilman Stonecifer?
Yes, I'd like to ask the mayor one question. I had the privilege of being with the mayor on the 25th anniversary that we celebrated MAPS, and he told me a great story. Can you tell everybody about the studies, your analysis, your thought that went into the location of the Bricktown Canal?
Yeah. We'd originally, on our original brochure, it showed the canal going down Reno. Well, obviously, as we, we went along because we didn't have any idea where the canal was going to be. Really didn't even know how we were going to build it. But Reno, it being a major artery street, we knew we couldn't close that. So Don Douglas, at the time, was with ADG Engineering Firm. And I, we were down in Bricktown, and California Street is now where the canal is. And it's down one story from what it used to be. In other words, we, we lowered the whole canals, everything, one story, and uncovered basically all the basements of all those beautiful old buildings that are down there. And we were standing on California Street, and I said, can we put it here? And being an engineer, you know, well, yeah, sure we can. I said, okay, that's where it's going to be. So that is really the whole strategic decision of where we put the canal. I mean, it's not very strategic, but I said, you know, this will work. Let's put it here. We ended up on the canal. The original canal spent $12.3 million built the canal. Now, since then, there's been a lot of improvement, probably another 15 or 20 million. But can you imagine? That, that's probably the best $12 million the city has ever spent. Been phenomenal, but it, it was just a very, I mean, we were flying by the bootstraps. I'm telling you, just trying to figure this out as we went along, just, just did it.
Well, sometimes genius comes in a blink, right? Sometimes we have, we have great ideas that just come to us. So congratulations. Mark, did you have something else for the mayor?
The only other thing I'd say is, none of you know this, but the mayor, Mayor Norick, lives in Ward 8. And once in a while, I get a phone call from the mayor, and whenever he calls, I listen. He has great insight. He has great guidance. And he usually thinks of things I haven't thought of. So the only thing I want to say, thank you for being here today, and thank you for your presentation, Mayor.
Well, thank you, Mark, and I appreciate everybody else. Maybe someday I'll get to actually meet you and shake everybody's hand. Surely, this will be over with at some time, you know? I look forward to that. And like I said before, enjoy, enjoy this. And, and like I said before, en, enjoy, enjoy this process. You, you, it, this is very important for the city. Enjoy the whole process. It'll be lengthy, but you'll, trust me, you'll enjoy it.
Thank you so much, Mayor Norick, for taking time and also reminding us of what our, our responsibility, duty, and the impact on our community is.
Yeah, well, thank you all, I appreciate it very much.
Travel safely.
Okay.
Enjoy tomorrow.
Okay, thank you very much.
And come back.
Okay, I will, anytime.
Um, so I believe, oh whoops. Um, the next thing that we, well, actually I'm going to ask, um, city manager before we go to the next, uh, voting item. Um, at our first meeting in person at the Cox Center, um, we, um, didn't get to hear from the city manager. And so, um, I believe that, uh, city manager Craig Freeman is with us. And wanted to just give him an opportunity to say hello to this group and, um, introduce himself and, uh, say a few words. So Craig, welcome.
Yeah, thank you, Teresa, I really appreciate that and appreciate the opportunity. I'm sorry that I had ducked out of the, uh, first meeting before, uh, Teresa had, gave me an opportunity to speak and I apologize for that. And, uh, wanted to make sure I circled back. I think I got around and met most everyone. There were a couple that I didn't get to meet in the first meeting, uh, but I'll make sure that I get to do that in time. Uh, I just wanted you all to know how much I appreciate your, uh, willingness to, uh, be a part of this very important part of our process. You know, participating on this group, this advisory board is so important to the city that I really just wanted to express my appreciation. And make sure that you know, um, I mean, David's frontline, he'll be here, you'll get to know David really well. And, uh, David and his team do a great job and, uh, are here to support you. Um, we're here to help you be successful. And so if there's concerns you have or issues you have or ways that we can help, um, you know, you can talk to David anytime. You can talk to me anytime, reach out, give me a call, send me an email. I'll be glad to do anything I can to help out. Um, I feel like my goal is to try to help you all have what you need so that we make this successful and stay out of your way. And that's really what I intend to do. So I, I won't be attending a lot of the meetings, but if there's something that I need to be a part of, um, I'll be glad to do that. I'll be keeping an eye on things and meeting with David regularly about this. But I just want you to know how much I appreciate the time you're committing. You know, Mayor Norick's comments were just spot on with how important this is to have such a great representation from our community who invest their time and give their advice and their recommendations, uh, to the council as they're making decisions about this. And I really am grateful for Teresa's leadership. I'm serving, you know, agreeing to serve as chair. And, um, I'm just really looking forward to working with you all and getting to know you. And just wanted to be able to say thank you, um, for taking the time and, and please feel free to reach out anytime I can help in any way. Thanks, Teresa.
Thank you so much, Craig. We appreciate both your leadership of the city and also your support of the Citizens Advisory Board. Um, I know we're going to lean into your offer of help, so, uh, we appreciate your, your willingness.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, so with that, we'll go back to the agenda. Item number three, election of vice chair. Um, and I would, um, accept nominations for, uh, vice chair.
I would nominate, uh, Bob Nealon. The reason being is that he has a great amount of historical knowledge and that he served on the Maps Three Advisory Board. And so at this time, I'd nominate Bob.
Okay.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Of course.
Um. Wasn't there an issue about the, um, staggering of appointments? Uh, I thought I recalled there being some concern about the vice chair not being able to serve as chair if they only had a year appointment or two.
And Shay, thank you so much for bringing that up. Um, in the interim between our meetings, and I probably should have started with this. So my apologies if I, um, did not clarify this before, uh, the motion. Um, we, David Todd went back and did some research and looked, um, the vice chair serves for one year. And so, um, it will just be a one-year term, which, um, kind of eliminates or moves past the concern of the vice chair role, um, being out of sequence with the term of appointment. So, kind of simplified that whole thing, but thank you so much for bringing that up. And like I said, I apologize for not clarifying that, um, first thing. So now we know who our memory bank is.
I take notes, that's the only way I remember.
So we have a nomination of Bob Nealon. Do we either have a second for Bob or other nominations?
This is Kevin, I'll second.
Okay, fantastic. Um, any other nominations? If not, I'll call for a boat, vote of, um, appointing or electing Bob Nealon as the vice chair for, uh, this first year.
Madam Chair, this is Mark. Uh, your members need to put in their motions on Prime Gov. If.
I'm not getting a motion signed. If you'll, if you'll bring that up, I'll push it.
Okay, it's.
It's waiting.
It just says waiting.
Mine as well.
Okay. Now, you can proceed to vote.
Okay, alright. So all those in favor of the motion, please vote. I need to quit saying that, please vote. Okay, fantastic. Um, the vote is in and Bob, you are our vice chair for the year. Thank you so much for your, your willingness. I guess I didn't ask you if you were willing to serve. You didn't, you didn't throw up your hands, so, um, thank you so much. Okay, so, um, moving on to our agenda, item number four. Receive, uh, the Maps Four Revenue and Expenditure Report ending July 21st, 2020.
Madam Chairman, you have the, um, Revenue and Expenditure Report. This is the first time you've, you've actually seen, this will be the general form, that you will see these in the future. And, um, there's a lot of things I could say about this. So, so we're showing the projected amount for total collections. And, and what we will be showing you is how much was collected for the month and then total, and then where we are, um, as far as target. I, I will say that each year that target will get adjusted. So there'll be some nuances there. But right now, for the, for the month, on the revenue side, there's $8,626,975. And for total revenues to July 21st of $19,444,016. And again, you can see that it's currently 16.7% below target. I encourage you not to panic because this, uh, this is a long program. There were some things built in to the projections that, that predicted things similar to what we're going through right now. Just the timing is always an issue. But again, I, I urge you not to panic. And as far as on the expenditure side, there has been no expenditures because we are not in that mode right now as far as doing projects. So if anybody has any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Okay. Questions of David? Okay, um, hearing none, I would, uh, take a motion to, um, receive. Do we, we need to, we need to vote to receive this, correct, Mark?
Yes, yes ma'am, you have, uh, you have a motion and a second.
Oh, great, okay, thank you. So, um, all those in favor of receiving the report, the revenue and.
Mark. Teresa, some, some reason it's not coming up, I, I vote for it, I'm sorry.
Alright, fantastic, thank you. Um, votes are in and the motion passes. So thank you so much, David, and we'll look forward to, um, those numbers moving forward. Um, so next on our agenda is item number six, the presentation on the Oklahoma City Family Justice Center. And before, um, our guest started, uh, just to, to remind, uh, the Citizens Advisory Board members, what we wanted to do was have those groups that are interested or advocates of any of the, um, projects that are, any of the 16 projects that are included in Maps Four, to have the opportunity to present to this group, the presentation that they made to city council, which resulted in the projects being included in Maps Four. Um, so Daisy, did I see that you have a question?
Yes, can I ask for whoever is not speaking to please mute their mic? That way we don't, um, cut off the presenter, please.
Great suggestion. Okay, so with that, I will turn it over to, um, Tricia Everest and Garrett, yes?
I, I was just going to mention one thing that we've asked them to condense their presentations. So some of these presentations had testimonials and things like that and they were much more lengthy. Um, but because of time, we've asked them to condense those a little bit.
Right, thank you. Alright.
Good morning, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, perfect. And can you screen of Palomar? Oh, there we go. Okay, um, good morning, thank you so much for this opportunity to present. My name is Kim Garrett and I'm the CEO of Palomar, Oklahoma City's Family Justice Center. And, um, I am joined right now with my board chair, Tricia Everest. And I actually apologize because we're not controlling the PowerPoint right now. So you might be seeing something that might not be exactly queued right now. But, um, can we please go back? Carrie? On the slide? Okay.
Do you want the screen, Kim?
I'm sorry, what Teresa?
Where do you want on the, the presentation?
Well, um, actually I'll just explain. So what you guys just saw is a video of the collaborative and the partnership that we do at Palomar. And it helps to kind of explain what work we do with our clients to help them heal from different crime victimizations. And I apologize because it's a little funky that I'm not, um, able to queue it myself. But, um, can you please go back a slide, Carrie?
Yeah, we're, we're trying to fix the technical issue here.
Do you want to, it might be easier, do you want to just screen? Let me share my screen.
Mark, what, what's your thoughts on that?
Sure, she can do that.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, let's try this.
Carrie, with you.
Can you see, um, a screen that has the Palomar logo at the top and then purple, two thirds of it?
Yes, with the envision.
Yes, okay, perfect. Okay, so in 2015, Oklahoma City Police Department recognized rising rates of domestic violence and took the lead on a bold vision to build a more rapidly and holistically response to the, serve the needs of survivors um, and their children. And they did this by bringing agencies from a wide range of expertise and experience together under one roof. So the city could more collaboratively help victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, stalking, elder abuse and human trafficking. And when we came together, what we found was astounding. Every 15 minutes, every 15 minutes, someone in Oklahoma City calls 911 for domestic violence. That's 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. And that is one in six households in Oklahoma City every year. And we know that it takes multiple victimizations before the first call to 911 and many will never call. Family violence is happening in more homes than you think. Yes, in your neighborhood. And if it's not happening in your home, statistically, it's happening in at least one of the homes you can see from your front door. So one of the things I often get asked is who's calling for help? Who are these people? And it's the pregnant woman who's been physically and sexually abused by her husband. She makes $11 an hour and if she leaves with her two young children, she will be facing poverty and homelessness. She's called for help. And it's also the nine-year-old boy who hung posters of superheroes all over his living room, hoping that they would jump out and protect him when his dad comes home to hurt him. The posters did not help and he called too. And it's also the married couple in their seventies who called after they had to lock themselves in their bedroom one night to avoid being physically abused by their son. This is a map of Oklahoma City with each city ward outlined. Each blue dot represents a domestic call to 911. And there were over 32,000 calls in 2018 alone. What you know, what we know is that the areas without calls are mostly farmland and unpopulated areas. And to give perspective of what 32,000 looks like, if each caller was seated in Chesapeake Arena for a concert, you could fill it twice every year. Further, we know violence does not discriminate and knows no bounds. I know what I'm saying may be hard to believe, but I can assure you that it is people that you know. But the shame and stigma often keep survivors hiding in plain sight. And survivors are not always who you'd think. Of course, we serve our share of people in vulnerable situations. Those living in or on the edge of poverty, joblessness and homelessness. But we also serve doctors, lawyers, police officers, clergy and everybody in between. We are both sad and proud to say that we have helped thousands of people from all races and ethnicities, religions, age and income brackets, gender expressions and sexual orientations from every corner of the city and beyond. It's not those people, it's our people, it's our community. And it clearly is affecting every ward in our great city. And the reality is you cannot have a safe community if you don't have safe homes. So, we like to dream big at Palomar. And we dreamed of building a community healing and restoration center for survivors and their children, where we can expand services, welcome more partner agencies and meet survivors holistic and long-term needs. A facility that doesn't have shame or stigma and welcomes all looking for healing. Because what we know is that despite everyone's hard work in this field, we are not meeting all of our community's needs. And we need to expand our framework and bring in more programming. Palomar is built on partnerships. And when we first began this collective impact model, we quickly learned many of the lawyers, advocates, child welfare workers and detectives had never met before Palomar, even though that they were working on the same cases with the same families. We're extremely proud of our partnership with the city and because of their leadership, we've been able to bring together government, nonprofits, city, county, state and federal agencies to all work together for a common goal. What started with 15 agencies has increased over 150% in just three years. And we continue to grow to meet the needs of our community. Collectively, we're all working together to change the framework for how professionals in the community respond to hurting people. When we stand together with our partner agencies, our impact is profound. We know that violence is so much more than just a social issue. It's a major public health epidemic that directly impacts public safety, our healthcare, our criminal justice system, the economy, education, churches, neighborhoods, families and our city's overall quality of life. Since opening, we've seen a reduction in crime and an increase in public safety. And our work is commanding national attention. Our partnerships and innovation are putting Oklahoma City on the map on a state and federal level. The Department of Justice has visited multiple times and is studying us in hopes to replicate what they call the gold standard. And just this spring, we were invited to present twice to the President's Commission on the Administration of Justice. And the work we do is necessary for our city's quality of life. Oklahoma ranks as one of the worst states for child adversity and trauma. The children we work with have had terrible things happen to them and things that most of us cannot even imagine. And research from the CDC is clear, because of the trauma that they've been exposed to, as they become adults, they are now more likely, seven times more likely to be an alcoholic, 10 times more likely to use drugs, or 12 times more likely to die by suicide. And the data also shows that trauma exposed kids do not meet their aptitude in education and later in the workforce, which decreases annual earnings and negatively impacts not only their lives. not only their lives, but our city's workforce and the economy. They are also more likely to develop long-term health problems, such as heart disease, stroke, cancer, and diabetes. And generational adversity significantly impacts many of the issues Oklahoma City struggles with, including homelessness, mental health, and the criminal justice system. We have a chance to mitigate this trauma. It simply comes down to our priorities. Most importantly, with our partners, we are helping victims find safety, healing, and hope. These are complex and very complicated situations that require long-term and holistic support. We know that coming in for one time for services is not going to interrupt a generational cycle. But the research shows that connection mitigates trauma and toxic stress. And our goal is to create a community where we encourage clients to come back as often as they need, for as long as they need. Our average client comes at least three times for services, and we've had many clients come back for many years since we've opened. And the cost of the community is significant. Oklahoma City is paying for violence significantly. And you see it through taxes, through philanthropy, the loss of productivity. And for children in violent homes, you cannot quantify the cost of being robbed of childhood and your potential. We did a very conservative cost analysis of one client in one year. And we believe the cost to our community for one person is just $154,000. When you consider that in 2018, we had over 3,200 clients, the potential cost Oklahoma City endures to domestic violence is over 500 million. What could our city do with that money instead? For every $1 the city spends on Palomar, the return on investment could be $12.67 every single year. So I'll share with you some of our vision. We've met with partners multiple times over the years to solicit their feedback on what resources and building needs they have to best serve their clients. One of the benefits of collaboration is being able to identify gaps. And we've realized the need to add more comprehensive and holistic services to meet all of our clients' diverse needs. A community healing and restoration center is critical. An expansion would allow us to help more people, expand services, add more cultural-specific services, and engage more partners. Therapy is one of our most requested services. And did you know that crime victims are more likely to suffer from post-traumatic stress disorder than soldiers returning from war? We want to provide more therapists and design a pro bono program so more clients can find hope and healing who are struggling with mental health issues, substance abuse, grief, and loss, and provide them with peer support. We also want to expand our children's services. For thousands of children in Oklahoma City, instead of being able to enjoy their childhood, they have, they have to focus on the safety of their family and live in survival. This impacts their education, impulse control, and ultimately, the ability to prepare for their future. Without intervention, adversity can have lifelong cognitive and physical effects. But we can change that by providing trauma-informed services, such as a daycare and drop-in center, mentoring, therapy, educational programming, parental support, and through our beloved Camp Hope programming. We've also quickly realized in this journey, the correlation between animal abuse and human abuse, and partnered with the Humane Society to develop the first-ever animal advocacy program in the nation. In 85% of violent homes, animals are also being abused. And this program helps keep pets safe, access emergency vet care, and coordinates foster care until the client can safely take the animal back. Also, many of our clients request faith-based services. And we envision a space where clients can find solace during their trauma and partnering with the faith community to develop a robust and non-denominational program. Medical is also a significant need, as crime victims have a high likelihood of injury and physical health problems stemming from the violence. We want to offer immediate and long-term trauma-informed healthcare options to include a pharmacy, a lab, forensics, and a medical unit. And we also dream of safe client and partner safe space. Since opening, we've had 34,000 individual client visits, which is pretty astounding, 34,000 in three years. The demand for coordinated services has been significant. Clients and their children need safe space to access resources and work through their trauma. And they also want community space where they can connect with other survivors without feeling shame and stigma. For the partners, the cases they work are very intense. And sometimes offenders threaten and try to intimidate the professionals. The police unit has a sign hung on their door that says homicide prevention unit. And everyone in the building knows we are working the highest-risk cases in Oklahoma City, and the stakes are high. If someone makes an error, people could die. Our partners deserve quality and safe workspace where they can work together on some of the most difficult and dangerous cases in our city. And lastly, we would love to have a conference training center. To date, we posted over 150 trainings, hundreds of multidisciplinary team meetings, and had over 7,500 visitors. We want to expand training space so partner agencies can host conferences and trainings. We want to partner with local universities for them to hold classes at Palomar. What better way to learn about criminal justice, or law, or social work than to have your classes here and see it in practice live? We also want to develop a simulation training lab where we'll have lifelike rooms set up for professionals and volunteers to learn how to respond to crisis and trauma. And also, very important, community space for classes, forums, events, and more. And we're also committed to being at the forefront of technological advances. What we know is that 75% of children who witness domestic violence will grow up and repeat the same behavior. Without intervention, and our great partners, the cycle will continue on. We know that violence and traumas impacted our community for decades, and there are generations of people who are healing from trauma and violence. Regardless of where they are in their journey, we will have services to meet them where they are. At any point in time, Oklahoma City is home to over 39,000 children who will repeat the cycle. Most violence starts in our homes, and generation by generation, we are unintentionally cultivating a population of trauma-exposed children. The people in the dark purple represent children who will grow up and repeat the cycle. If one person chooses violence and control, within four generations, 18 people will be continuing the cycle. Violence has a huge impact on families. But you can help us change that. Over the years, we've met multiple times with partners to develop a space survey. And based on their feedback, our preliminary design is an 80,000-square-foot building. This budget reflects the costs necessary to design, construct, and furnish such facility. And it would allow us to increase our capacity by two-thirds. You'll notice two different costs presented. The $37 million is based on costs if we stay in Midtown. A philanthropic business owner is interested in donating land for our use. If this was the chosen option by the advisory council, we would be splitting costs on a shared parking structure. The $43 million cost is based on costs if the committee chooses a separate location and includes land acquisition and expenses necessary to build an entire parking structure. We are currently located in Midtown area, and it's our desire to stay here. It is safe, centrally located, and de-stigmatizes the taboo of getting help. Also, in survivor-focused groups, it's been overwhelmingly positive. We also have project urgency. Every year, our client numbers increase. And we serve a critical need now, and our families are suffering now. Our landlord has delayed demolition of our current building because they believed in our vision and wanted to provide us a foundation to start serving families. And we've continued to extend the lease, though the building is not guaranteed years from now. We also, our current building is over 80 years old and has severe issues with plumbing, connectivity with technology, and things like that. And then when you're considering the order of projects, please know that Palomar is ready to go now. We've had a significant increase in partner agencies working in our building, over 150% in just three years. And our services continue to increase. We actually don't do mass advertising because we cannot accommodate a significant influx of clients. We worked with partners over the years to develop space surveys and preliminary architectural renderings. And one of the things that's most important about our programming is that it's guided by survivors. And in our MAPS4 presentation to city council, survivors shared why Palomar serves a critical need for our community. And I wanted to share those with you now.
My name is Zach Hoffman. I'm 18 years old, a survivor of sexual abuse. And I want Palomar to be on MAPS4 because Camp Hope is something that I'm a counselor at. And seeing kids be able to be kids and be able to have part of their childhood back, even if it's for one week out of the entire year, really gives me hope. And it helps me every single day fight the battles that I have to fight. And seeing kids live in such traumatic environments gives me hope that I can do anything.
Hi, my name's Marlene White. Some of you know me as an educator in Oklahoma City Public Schools. Some of you have been in my school. My family has been affected. And we did come to the Palomar two years ago. So Palomar needs more space for my children, my family, and other children to have been exposed to abuse. They need a place to grow. They need a place for healthy kids that model this for them. They need to understand healthy relationships and overall feel a part of a loving and safe place. And so we have been able to experience Camp Hope and a VPO and things like that. And so many people don't know that. That's why when she says "the face of our community", you would never think of myself or my children.
My name is Kristin. And I'm the Senior Vice President of PR for a large company in Oklahoma City. And I've never told my story, but I am a survivor of domestic violence. Here are real questions that I've been asked. How can that be? You're a strong person. Why did you stay in that kind of relationship? What did you do to cause it to happen? Here's what I'll tell you. I don't know. I don't know. It just creeps in. And the next thing you know, you're lying on the floor, and his hands are around your neck, and he's kicking you in the back and screaming vile things about you with your 18-month-old baby in the house. I have a great job. I have a great family. I have a strong faith. And I have plenty of financial resources. It doesn't matter. There is no face of domestic violence. There is no type of person who is abused. There is no type of neighborhood where it occurs. I live in Quell Creek. This is happening in Nichols Hills, and Gladiator, and Edmund, in Quell Creek. It's happening today. You saw the map. The morning after, he beat me up so badly, I had to call for help. The police were looking for him. I'm scared to be here today and say this when I saw the media outside. It scares me. I had to go to the courthouse to file a VPO. And I remember looking down the counter while I was filling out a victim report. First, I thought, I will never be here again. But all those women look like me. They look like your family. They look like your neighbors. I had to then go by myself to see an investigator at the police department. They take you down to kind of a dark room. They interview you. And I remember the investigator, he was very kind, but he was interrogating me. And he said, "It's just hard to know what's serious and what's not because you don't have scissors coming out of your back." My blood ran cold when the investigator asked me a question that let me know he knew this person. And he said, "You need to get out." If there had been a place like Palomar, where I could have gone to fill out a VPO, meet with a police officer, take my baby, and be surrounded by care, I think I would have felt hope that day. I was terrified. I put bells on all my doors just to make sure my baby and I were safe. And I still deal with it. One month ago, leaving a hearing at the courthouse, he followed me, and he jumped out of an alley. Thank God, two construction workers were there, and he fled. This is a real issue. It doesn't matter where you live. And if you have money, it doesn't matter. It's happening here, council. You have it in your power, not just to create a beautiful community. I'll be honest, I want bike lanes too. I love bike lanes. But including Palomar in MAPS4, it can transform this city. Let me tell you how. It can make a city where you're safe to go on the trails, where you're safe to ride bikes, where you're safe to go to parks, and you don't worry about being abused. You have the opportunity. And I'm asking that you ensure Palomar is included in MAPS4.
I always have to take a breath because it takes my breath away, hearing those brave survivors. But I hope you know that there is a great need in our community. Harvard has declared domestic violence one of the most serious public health issues of our time. Advisory members, the decisions you make today will impact and influence generations to come. I thank you so much for your time and consideration, and Tricia and I are here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Kim. Appreciate that, that report and that presentation so much. So at this time, I would open it up to questions. Shay, I think you're still muted, or you've got the volume down.
Is this better?
Yes.
Okay, I think I'm just too far away. I was just wondering on the slide that was titled Collective Impact. On increased safety, I do see, I'm not really sure what this line means, but my, my question is, I see Oklahoma County listed here. And I'm just wondering, do you track for other counties that are, that Oklahoma, like I'm in Cleveland County, but I'm in Oklahoma City? And I'm just wondering if you, if you track other counties?
We actually have not tracked the charges filed in other counties, but we could.
Okay.
The majority of our cases are filed in Oklahoma County. Because the city jurisdiction is predominantly in Oklahoma County.
Thank you.
Anything else, Shay?
No, I think that was it. Thank you.
Any other questions of Kim or Tricia? Ally?
Yeah, hi. Thank you so much, Kim. I'm curious if you can just tell us a little bit more about how you're able to continue services in the midst of a pandemic, where I'm guessing also there may be a spike in need?
Good question. So when COVID started hitting our community, there was actually a spike of 28% in domestic calls from the previous year, which is pretty significant when you think about it. We're seeing a higher rate of severe violence. DHS workers have talked about seeing kids who have been strangled. I mean, pretty violent, serious escalations going on. We've had to get really creative in doing virtual services, live chat, you know, teleservices, things like that. And we're starting to see more and more victims feeling comfortable coming in now. We have a strong PPE policy and provide all of the things clients could need while they're here for safety, and even when they're out in the community, if they don't have resources for them.
Thank you. I'm also curious, this is probably a question that I'll want to ask of anybody, but as you kind of, you know, some things will go back to the normal and some things won't. Have you thought any about how you might need to restructure? Have you thought any about how you might need to restructure, ask us to restructure what you're looking at to meet your, your evolving needs?
Absolutely. I think COVID is actually going to push a lot of social services into the 21st century. People want to commute, communicate virtually. It's easier, it's faster, it's more accessible, especially for our demographic when they're, you know, hiding in a bathroom and they've only got three minutes to contact us for services. We need to provide them that outlet to connect where they are. And so we're certainly open to revisiting this and, and working to best identify the needs of our community. Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions of Kim or Tricia? Brenda?
Hi Brenda. Thank you very much. Hi, how are you? Thank you for your presentation and all the information. I, I see how you're talking about right now, as it is, you're already overwhelmed with all the current cases that you have. And could you tell us possibly how many more potential victims we could possibly serve with, with this new center?
Well, our goal is that it would help us increase capacity by two-thirds. And annually, annually, we see upwards of over 3,000 clients. That's unduplicated. So potentially upwards of 9,000 plus. And when you think that they come multiple times, there's a lot of foot traffic. I also, I think it's really important that we create community space to discuss some of these really tough issues and have it where it's not just restricted AMAG access, but there's also places where survivors can gather and grow organically. So I think it will be a lot more than actually 9,000 a year.
Well, and, and following up to Ally's question about possibly going virtual or how, you know, our current situation is changing things. Do you think, I mean, taking into consideration how this new space may even give us a little bit of social distancing between the victims and, and so on?
Yeah. Absolutely.
Thank you, Kim.
You're welcome.
I have one more question.
Yes.
Kristin, or Kimberly, I'm sorry. You had mentioned that there was the potential of staying in Midtown due to philanthropic offer. Do you know when you might, when that will be decided or?
It's up to you guys, actually, of, that's why there were two budgets presented of, obviously, our expenses would be a lot less if we had that location donated, then we wouldn't have to pay for land. But the city's been very clear from the beginning that it's really up to this advisory council.
Right. Shay, as we consider and we go through the implementation plan process, and when we look specifically at the Palomar project, that is part of what we will decide is if we go with the plan in Midtown and take advantage of the donation of land or if we choose to locate it in a different space. So yeah, that, that, that will be part of this, this board's determination and evaluation.
Okay, thank you.
Kimberly, I have a question. I know you said that Palomar does a lot of partnerships with different, different community outreach centers. Do you guys have a partnership with Oklahoma City Public Schools? Or has Palomar like been into schools, kind of trying to bring that mitigation to students who can probably be, you know, part of domestic violence in their homes?
Absolutely. So we do have a partnership with the public schools and they actually had a counselor embedded here for quite a while. I think it's a really important partnership because they see the kids, you know, that are at a high risk and I value the partnership with the schools.
And can you, can you explain a little bit more on like how that works? I know you said you have a counselor, but just a little bit.
Of what, what she was doing?
Yes.
So, for example, on one of the cases, we had an abuser wouldn't let the kids go to school. And so they were like 10, 12 years old and had never been to school. So academically, they were far behind. And so she was able to coordinate with them to try to get them into classes that could help get them reintegrated into school safely with teachers who understood trauma. One of the things we really want to work on is educating educators of how to respond to trauma-exposed kids. And one thing I'm really hopeful about is when we're able to build this, several organizations have expressed interest of moving their operations onsite full-time. And so they would be able to take that money from their line item of paying rent and not have to pay that. And they could put it into preventative efforts or educational programming so we could go up the river.
Thank you.
Good questions.
Other questions?
Yeah, Teresa, my ask, and then this probably directed to Kim and perhaps Mark and David Todd as well. If I'm recalling the numbers correctly, we've got about 38 million allocated in the preliminary budget to, to Palomar. The budget number that you proposed was about five or six billion more than that. We can always remain hopeful as our experience in Maps3 has been. We raised more money than originally budgeted over the, that length of time. But if we don't, do you have some contingency plans on how you would accomplish your goals within the budget that we have?
Sure. So this kind of goes back to, we could stay under that $38 million if you guys chose donated land option, which is available and an option now. And I think that's really important to consider because it's a huge multimillion dollar cost savings. But if you guys wanted it to be in a different area and we had to pay for the land, that's why it would be so much more. That's the difference.
Yeah, Bob, you know, just like we did in Maps3, we have a budget and we will stay within that budget. And if we get to a point where we think it's significant enough, we could advance this on to, to city council. And like you said, if there's excess collections or some sort of other funding, we could discuss that and recommend that. But our goal is always to, to stay within budget and to try and deliver as much and be as effective as we can.
Sure. And Kim, do you have your eye on some land at a location that you think could be donated?
Absolutely. So actually, a philanthropic business owner has already offered to donate the land.
And sufficient in size to accommodate the building that you're hoping to have?
Yes.
Great.
It's a specific piece, Bob, of land. So architect, as I understand, the architectural drawings contemplate that piece, that property.
Correct.
Okay. Obviously, something we get to through our implementation planning, but just curious.
Right. Yeah.
And it's close by where we are right now, which is pretty convenient.
Teresa, the one thing I'd say to the committee, Kim and Tricia were kind enough to invite me to come and take a tour of Palomar. And it's a real eye-opener and I would encourage everyone to take that opportunity if it's given to them.
Absolutely. I think that's an outstanding suggestion, Mark, because you don't quite get the and how the, the uniqueness of how Palomar is designed. But you do get a sense of that when you go through the facility. So wonderful suggestion, Mark. And I'm assuming that, Kim, you and Tricia would, would entertain that.
We will do a socially distanced tour.
Okay. Other questions? Yes, Ally?
Yeah, thanks Teresa. Hey, Kim, can you tell me, are you hoping to be in a position to expand either the number of legal aid attorneys you have on board or counselors? Like I would assume the plan is to, you know, as you build space, also build the number of people who are serving clients. And forgive my ignorance, can you tell me a little bit about how that work is funded?
Sure. So you know, if you guys know me, you know, I dream big. And one of the biggest requested items from clients has always been therapy and civil legal services. So we have a partnership right now with legal aid and it started with four attorneys onsite and they have federal funding for those positions. We've already with them added three more positions. So there's seven attorneys and they're looking to hire one right now specifically for immigration related to crime victimization, which I'm really excited about. We also acknowledge that we can't do it along with federal money. And so we recently hired a legal director who is developing a pro bono, low bono program and engaging attorneys in our community who have a heart for helping to help us meet the demand. And then we're also wanting to launch a incubator program in our next facility where we can take first-year graduates of law school and exchange for rent, have them take on a percentage of our cases. So we do try to really get creative in identifying ways to meet the needs and expand capacity.
Great. Other questions? Okay, fantastic. Kim, thank you so much for the presentation. Tricia, thank you so much for joining us. The work that you all are doing is phenomenal and not only life-changing, but life-saving. So thank you for your time today. And you're welcome to stay. We'd love for you to, to stay on the call, but if you need to pop off, we understand that as well.
Thank you. We appreciate you all.
So next, we will move to item number seven on our agenda. The presentation on the Clara Looper Civil Rights Center for Oklahoma City. And I believe Leonard Benton is.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thanks so very much for the invitation to, to make presentation on a very, very exciting venture that we're involved in with the preservation of the historic Freedom Center and the proposed new Clara Looper Civil Rights Campus in Northeast Oklahoma City. I'm Leonard Benton. I'm the chairman of the Board of Directors of the reconstituted Board of Directors of the Freedom Center. Many of you know that two years ago, in September, two years ago, that the city council designated the Historic Freedom Center as a historic landmark in the city of Oklahoma City. That same month is that I was appointed as, by the course, to be the receiver for the project to, to bring it by. Is that the Freedom Center had been abandoned for about 10 years after the loss of Mrs. Looper. The board was all but defunct. And so our first challenge as a receiver was to begin a process of organizational development to bring this Freedom Center to become a modern 501(c)(3) proactive organization with all of the levels of accountability, responsibility, transparency, et cetera. We have done that through the recruitment of an outstanding board of directors of some 17 individuals consisting of persons representing Mrs. Looper's family. Many of you may know Marilyn Looper Hildrich, who was one of the original sit-iners. We have members who were former sit-ins on our board. We have members who were former officers and presidents of the NAACP Youth Council. We have the president of the NAACP, of our local NAACP. We have people such as former city council persons, Reverend Lee Cooper, a minister, pastor of the church within three or four blocks of the Freedom Center, Sam Bowman, who worked in our community within the Northeast quadrant for many years as the CEO of the NSO, Native Services Organization, and a former member of the city council. And we are just cultivation partners and friends and throughout the community to help us build the kind of organization that the Freedom Center should be. I have this morning a presentation that was developed in, pretty much in our first year of operation, the last year. Certainly, one of the priorities last year was for us to, to develop the, to pursue the, the idea of having this Freedom Center and the new Clara Looper Center to be included in Maps4. And we are very, very pleased, you know, that it was a project included in Maps4. I have a video of about three minutes that was developed during the campaign last year. And then they will give you a general overview of the project. And that will follow with the 11, a PowerPoint presentation of about 11 slides that we can kind of go through and I can make comments. And should there be questions or comments that you might, would have, would have at that time is that that might be a good way that we can have kind of an interactive dialogue in terms of who we are, where we are, and where we're trying to go. At this time, I'd like to present the three-minute presentation. Are we ready on that, Carrie? Mark?
Yes, she should be bringing that up shortly.
Thank you.
It might indicate that our community over had a, one of the highest support turnout, a high turnout and a very high level of support. And one of the precincts in, in our community is that we had 90% approval of the Maps4 projects. And I know that it was, overall, is that the approval rate was the greatest ever, highest ever. But we were very proud to see folks in our community to turn out in the manner in which they did.
Leonard, Mark Stonecipher here. How are you today?
Hi, Mark. How you doing?
I'm doing well. The second page of our presentation has a picture of the Katz Drugstore lunch counter. And that, we have a large version of that on the second floor of City Hall. And the other day I was walking out of a, a meeting that we, we had a, an ad hoc committee that was revising the city charter, which is our state constitution. And I was walking out with Stan Evans, who is the Associate Dean at the OU College of Law and is on our committee. And he pointed over to the picture and we walked over to it. And the first young person in the striped shirt is Stan Evans on, what is it, August 19th, 1958, the day the sit-in occurred. And to hear him tell the story of that picture was electric. It was really inspiring.
I had a comment to, to make when that slide was to have to be presented. And, and, and to tell the story of Stan, that as we, as you've indicated, is that, that he is a gentleman that we can all be very, very proud of in terms of living the dream that Mrs. Looper had for, for young people. And most importantly is that we envisioned the city movement and lunch counters, that it was all about getting, being served a hamburger or served a Coke. But it was far, far more important than that is that it was instilling within the minds and in the hearts and the souls of young people of color that everything is possible. And that, that not only within terms of their own individual commitment, but the need to remove those barriers that deny one to fulfill their, their greatest dreams. So Stan is just a wonderful model. And, and he continues to give back in all aspects to our community.
Yes.
But are we having some issue with?
Yeah, I was going to say, Mark or Carrie, are we, are we working out our, our technical issue?
He's having some technical issue bringing up the video. We may go to the presentation first.
Yeah.
Okay.
Leonard, would that work for you to?
That'll work just fine.
Okay.
This first slide is showing that Mrs. Looper, a teacher, historian, and activist. Our community is beginning to show great appreciation, recognition, and and honor of a iconic, outstanding woman who was responsible for significant historic change, not only in our community, but now being recognized nationally, is that our community is currently looking at a plaza to be developed at the site of the original site of the Katz Restaurant. Those plans are moving forward quite in a progressive manner. I think that our community will be very proud of the plaza that will be developed there. The community has recognized her contribution in the naming of the Northeast Twenty-third Street as the Clara Looper Corridor. And just to make mention of one other is that University of Oklahoma from where Mrs. Looper was the first African American to graduate from with a master's degree in history is that recently has LU has named the African, African American Studies Program in honor of Mrs. Looper. The next slide, please. As Mark was indicating, there's Stan Evans is that I think we have had a comment in terms of Stan. Stan is is again is that he's just an outstanding gentleman that very much involved in building a great church in his community there on North Kelly Avenue. And also his profession, he is an active member of the Southwestern Urban Foundation that put together a program to provide legal services for families to make 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 a will. And he's done a fantastic job. Hundreds of people have gone through that program where they receive free services. But again, acting in the tradition of Mrs. Looper. Next slide. This is a slide that shows our neighbors, especially our location there at Northeast Twenty-third, Martin Luther King, or the Clara Looper Corridor, as it has been renamed in relationship to the Oklahoma City Adventure District. You can see that within a mile or two these major attractions that exist within Northeast Oklahoma City. Several years ago, I saw where it was indicated of the major tourist attraction in Oklahoma City, seventeen or eighteen of those facilities exist within the Northeast Quadrant is that we for the purpose of our presentation, we we understand that the district attracts something like two million people on an annual basis is that we take a very conservative figure in terms of the possibility in terms of the Freedom Center and the New Clara Looper that at five percent is that on an annual basis is that we would attract about a hundred thousand people to that facility, very connected with important attraction institutions within the Northeast Quadrant. We see a great opportunity that for those kinds of visitors, in addition to being attracted to what some have begun to call the African American Cultural District that it would create a very important economic community development impact, bringing jobs and and businesses to that location and to that area. Next slide. Here's a closer view in terms of the center and the site under consideration to the right on Martin Luther King at Twenty-sixth Street. The Freedom Center, the Historic Freedom Center is located. That is now the designated landmark, historic landmark. We have had conversations and in several meetings with the Urban, Oklahoma City Urban Renewal Authority about the land that is vacant and cleared and abandoned at this point from there to Madison Avenue as a campus for this development. The Freedom Center is about an acre of land. Urban renewal property is under consideration as a site. Another four acres. So the campus would be about five acres of land. And the next slide. It is our objective to restore and preserve the existing Freedom Center, to construct a Smithsonian caliber civil rights campus, and to create an interactive journey from the Freedom Center to the Civil Rights Center, the new Civil Rights Center. Starting at the top is that we have had pro bonos services, architectural services provided by Marcus and Payne. They have really been a great friend to to us in terms of helping us with conceptualizing what could happen on that campus from the Freedom Center. We're looking at creating a legacy journey with the monument that currently exists and moving that more into towards the Martin Luther King. And that that monument has many of the person who were actively involved in leadership position and supported the NAACP Youth Council and then also civil rights in Oklahoma City. And that to move in there down to the new development consists of about three blocks on the west side of Martin Luther King. And next slide, please. This is kind of depicting the cavern site for the Freedom Center. Architects have been very creative is that they are proposing to move that monument to to be more to in the path, the journey, and to set it on a fifty-eight degree angle to commemorate nineteen fifty-eight as being the date and year when the civil rights movement was launched here in Oklahoma City. And just by in less than two weeks on September, August eighteenth is that the first demonstration occurred at the Katz Restaurant. And there, the Legacy Committee of which Marilyn and Dr. Josh Henderson and many others is that they have kept that alive with the Freedom Fiesta that they have celebrated on an annual basis for sixty-eight years. And because of the COVID situation is that we will not be able to kind of plan that, we will not have that celebration this year. But it will be sixty-eight years ago when that historic event occurred. Next slide. And let me just comment, this is what we have. You see the refurbished Mid-Centric Gas Station. That's the only building that is currently existing. And we have visited with Kathy O'Connor and her people that that to that we would like for that building to that that be included in the plan. And that we have and we have proposed that that building become a visitor center. Also a cafe with a sidewalk cafe. And we have proposed the name of being sixteen nineteen Cafe Sixteen Nineteen. As many of you know, sixteen nineteen was the year that first African American slaves were brought to this country. The next slide. And you can see propose a new parking lot that would accommodate tourist buses, school buses for the for the campus. And here is the proposed Clara Looper Civil Rights Center, the larger building. And that that building has been set on a sixty-four degree angle in commemoration of the nineteen sixty-four Civil Rights Act. A multi-purpose building to include where the exhibits would occur spaced with exist in that building for a few related organizations, multicultural organizations and or to to have space in the building along with the Freedom Center. And that to include a an events center of some five to six hundred with five, six hundred feet seating capacity where we could have all kinds of a community events, cultural, educational seminars, et cetera, and at a very good location there on Martin Luther King near the Northeast Twenty-third Street and Clara Looper Corridor. At the end of that journey, the public art with youth, the journey continues is that we kind of began the the journey at the top of the page at the Freedom Center with the historic monument. And that and with at the south end of of the campus is that a monument public art that would depict and encourage that this journey continues with the youth of today and the youth of tomorrow. The next slide. We have been very, we have been very, very fortunate to have Mr. Bruce Fisher, who is the curator for the Oklahoma African American Art African American Gallery at the Oklahoma History Center. He's been a consultant who has really kind of helped us and introduced us to to places that stem to what we proposed. And we had the group to visit the Greenwood Cultural Center. And there we saw the John Franklin Park, a beautiful development that's related to the Culture Center. That we 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 have, we we have done research on various other museums. We recently became a member of the African American Museum Association of America and that we have also was invited by the National Trust for Historic Presentation for a free training, board training opportunity in Memphis that was scheduled for May because of the COVID nineteen that that had to be the council. But we are beginning to cultivate those networks around this issue. And we were led to believe that we can pull, that we would be able to develop a high level of sophistication, learning from experiences of other similar museums that exist in our community. We were very, very impressed with the Witty-Governor Museum that was developed in Tulsa about five or six years ago, a kind of comparable size that really connect with the Clara Looper Museum. Next slide. This is a budget that was proposed that included, again, the restoration of the Freedom Center at a cost of about a half million dollars. The renovation of the existing gas station and the creation of the new Clara Looper Civil Rights Center. The basic change in this budget that you see that was proposed is that the MAPS Committee and City Council in their wisdom increased the endowment from three million dollars to nine million dollars in terms of that being the fund, investment, that would assure the maintenance and management and the continuum flow of first dollar revenue in terms of the future operation of the center. So those other costs that they have been, the development costs in this case is that is about sixteen million dollars. We have not put our architects in terms of kind of restructuring until we get to that point in terms of actually getting some detailed specification development. But that is, was the most important change that I wanted to call to your attention. The next slide. Just in summary is that I would say that we're with the Freedom Center that we're about preserving the history, creating a venue that will provide a place to educate not only the citizens of Oklahoma City, the state, the region, and how the civil rights movement in Oklahoma, Oklahoma City in particular is related to the larger movement that occurred for civil rights in the modern day civil rights movement during the nineteen sixties. And also the the legacy of the civil rights movement in Oklahoma that led up to the historic demonstration that occurred in the fifties and the sixties. Mrs. Looper's leadership, I would say, pretty much doing the city move, the city and the counter demonstration in nineteen fifty-eight up to the nineteen sixty-nine sanitation worker strike here in Oklahoma City that followed the assassination of Dr. Martin Luther King in nineteen sixty-eight where there were many, many communities that were in violent turmoil as a result of that. But those of us who lived through that period and those of us who look back at that period, we can say that our community really practices what John Lewis and many others are talking about, the true principles of civil disobedience in a nonviolent manner. And that we never had, and I worked with the Urban League in my career in public service for more than fifty years professionally, most of that time in Oklahoma City, that we have always been able to create and bring attention to those issues of most importance and demand to our community and other communities which have suffered under oppressive policies of racism, discrimination, segregation, along with others. That we have been able to bring those to the table and that we've been able to negotiate, create levels of understanding to exist and well-established meaningful relationship between blacks and whites and now many, many other groups to seek a more peaceful meaning. I can say just that in terms of currently is that I have so much, I feel so proud, have so much. I'm so proud of those who have been involved in and the Black Lives Matters movement in Oklahoma City in particular is that we had great demonstration of blacks and whites and many, many others. And it was all done in nonviolent, peaceful manner. This is the legacy that we want to preserve in the Historic Freedom Center and the legacy to pass on to all, to be known in the Clara Looper Civil Rights Center. Should you have any questions or any comments of it? I look forward to addressing those.
Thank you. Carrie, do we have the the video now?
She is gonna try to bring that up.
Okay. We'll give Carrie a minute to see if we can get that and then open it up for questions.
And if we are not able to do it today, I really want you to to see this one. I think that I mean, Josh Jackson, who was one, was heavily involved in the in the production, that Josh is a Josh is a member of our board, a member of the Legacy Committee, the editor of the Shades of Oklahoma magazine, modeled kind of in the image and encouraged by Mrs. Luper, been one of her, that she worked with Mrs. Luper. And Josh was one, was the first African American woman to to host a locally, a TV talk show. And she had an outstanding career in the media. But we have been so blessed to have so many retirees to be working with us. And that we are, and we have, and that that is our big issue at this point. And we have had, as we look to the future, a professional fund developer fundraiser to have us put together a formal proposal identifying our needs between December and between now and the time that MAPS funded would become available. And that two or three issues that we have identified is why we have, we have a major responsibility to stabilize the building. We have had one of the top structural engineers on a pro bono basis, Steve Ford.
Right.
He has developed a sixteen-page structural engineering report in that there's some showing up that needs to be done, that needs to be moved, all of the bricks. We we got the utilities turned back on, we had some sewer line work that's been repaired. And we're trying to get the building to where it's at least habitable, safe to to during during this period of time, so that there is in fact something to be preserved and restored as we move down the road. And had it not been for COVID nineteen, I think that some of those funding would have been from private sources and federal grants and others that that we are, that we are beginning to speak and tell our story and let folks know what it is that we need. We also have, you know, the issue in terms of fiscal accountability. I see Teresa smiling, and I'm smiling too, Teresa, and you can't see me. But CFO is that they have come in as a partner to to provide, to handle the the dollars that's coming in and to assure that we get the high level of fiscal accountability. And thank you so very much, Teresa, and it's an outstanding service that you provide to organizations such as ours, as we're incubating and building that capacity to do it on and on.
Good. So I think, Mark, are we are we going to be able to do the video?
Unfortunately, it doesn't appear that it will be able to come out today.
Well, maybe we can send that out to the board members so that you can, and I would encourage you to to review that when you have a few moments. But with that, if we've got some questions, Dr. Black, yes.
Yeah, is the video available online somewhere that we can go and and look at it?
We have a website and it's underdeveloped there. And that particular video, we have not, I was able to pull up that video when it was made, no, no, that was a presentation to City Council. Now, that video, that the three minutes, that it is not available. We looked at that and everything was working yesterday, but we're learning the technology.
We'll see if we can't find a way to get it out to to you and to to the other board members.
We will try to send it to the board members.
Okay, great. Questions? Any other questions of Mr. Benton? Bob?
Well, Teresa, a personal comment to Leonard first. I graduated from high school in nineteen sixty-four and from college in nineteen sixty-eight, which are obviously both monumental years in the civil rights movement. And it's been interesting as an observer and occasional participant in the in this journey. And it's so exciting to see us memorialize that in such a dynamic way here in Oklahoma City. And I think that's one of the diamonds in the rough, if you will, for for MAPS four of the projects here in the city. So I'm very excited to see how that goes. I did have a question, really, for David Todd. Remind me, where is the past three Wellness Center in that quadrant, set on Thirty-Sixth?
It's going to be located at Thirty-Sixth and and Lincoln Boulevard.
Oh, in Lincoln, okay.
It's on the northeast corner there, Thirty-Sixth and Lincoln, right, where the home.
Okay, it was, it still is in the neighborhood, and it was not one of those things that was marked on the map as being one of your neighbors. When that center is completed, I think that will add to the dynamics of of that neighborhood and will be an important contribution to it.
Definitely so, definitely so. Just a comment in terms of another objective that we define is that, and that is, when we had the services of another professional organization development to provide pro bono services and having us develop a three to five year plan. And one of the components is that in in terms of, you know, just kind of the administrative thing to make sure the organization is sound, the most important piece is going to be program development, what are going to be the programs that will exist in in those facilities. We're beginning to talk about a concept of the Clara Luper Experience and that in terms of some of the traditional programs that existed there and how can those can be refined and updated in terms of addressing current issues. But most importantly is that, that what happened in in the new facility, what happens on that campus. And we have been introduced to the firm and and a professional and who have offered us a formal proposal of program development. The individual in the firm has been involved and as consultant to the the National African American Museum, sponsored by Smithsonian, that opened up about two, three or four years ago. We had a team at this year of the Legacy Committee, including the regional sitting. They visited with Dr. Munch, the new secretary of Smithsonian, and also the interim executive director of the National Museum. This consultant, we are very, we are very pleased that they're involved with a number of civil rights type of development throughout the community. They also work with Obama in terms of presidential library and center that's been developed in in Chicago. And so we're looking to bring at some point that person aboard and that process is that that had been defined. It will take us upwards to a year to to really develop, you know, the program concept in terms of what is to happen on that campus. But we led, we are led to believe that we are connected with the right kind of people, with the kind of expertise and the talents. And more importantly, in terms of our visit with this particular consultant, is that there was a level of just kind of personal and professional commitment that I really want to be involved in, and this is what I'm about, this is what Mrs. Luper was about. And I just wanted to be a part of this development. So we're very, you know, that that piece will come.
Thank you, Leonard. And and that's important for the board to know that you're simultaneously working on the program as well as the the bricks and mortar facility piece. So any final questions for Mr. Benton? Okay, Ete? All righty. Brenda, did you, did you have a question?
Well, I wanted to just thank Mr. Benton for the presentation today. And it's just wonderful news to know that our city is working on this very special project and just to really to our history. And so I, but I wanted him to maybe tell us the importance, especially right now in the timing of of this center being built.
Thanks, folks, so very much for the question is that. But I've worked in the civil rights movement for many, many years, and like all of us is that we were tremendously young. Those are my generation is that I was blessed to celebrate my eighty-first birthday, the first of July, and that my professional career with the Urban League started in nineteen sixty-seven here in Oklahoma City. And that after the Urban League, I went to the University of Oklahoma around ninety-six and was there for about three or four years and was one of the founders and subsequently the executive director of the Oklahoma Multicultural Leadership Institute that was housed at the College for Continuum and Education at the Southwest Center for Human Relations Studies. And to see the current movement is that I kind of thought that one point is that that the generation that follows us is that they just about forgotten where they had come from, is that they kind of got lost in exercise and all of these great opportunities that came out of that, the civil rights movement, but not picking up the banner in terms of taking it to the next level. I have no doubt in my mind at this point, and I feel real, real good about what I see with these young people who are stepping up to the plate in such a, I can see the collective and intellectual capacity. I can feel the commitment. I can feel, you know, the strategic planning that's taking place. And more importantly is that I can feel that this is very new. It's not just African American minorities who says we have to do the right thing with respect to the issue of equality. It's all of our responsibility. And that's, that's just a good feeling. I was talking with Sam Bowen in my back, you know, if I might just say this a couple weeks ago, and we kept our social distance. And and he was sharing with me that he had, he has a grandchildren up in the Tulsa community and that some members of the family, because of kind of the influence of the children, is that who had gone to school at the Booker T. Washington High School there in Tulsa, Booker T. Washington, you know, was a great African American leader, turned his twenties back in the nineteen hundreds. And that they had, were so pleased to have had the opportunity to have been invited, you know, to participate, you know, in a march and a demonstration. And as to Sam, as you know, many folks, we were heavily involved back in the seventh, sixth and seventh in terms of school disavergation. And many of us have had questions, was that the best thing or not? But we both kind of concluded that maybe there was some thing that didn't work with school disavergation and other attempts to move towards a beloved community. But there were a whole lot of things that did. And maybe the most important thing that's happened is that genuine friendships were developed, just based upon being friends, being in a relationship with others. And that if you're my friend and you're hurting, I'm going to be there. I'm going to hand you back, whether you're black, white, or a polka dot. But we have overcome a whole lot of intolerance as a result of for this downtown. Then if you go to the city of Oklahoma City, you see black minority women everywhere. That did not happen when Clara Luper came down with, in nineteen sixty, then with the sanitation worker strike. We, that much has changed since then. So I'm, I'm saying that the things, there's still a long ways to go, but I see so much change here in Oklahoma City that truly has been positive and good for our community.
I agree. And and Leonard, I would say, as a, as a lover of history, it's always helpful to have the context of the past to help us frame and see where we are and where we need to move. And I think the Clara Luper Center is going to help us do that with with a deeper knowledge of a specific person, a specific leader, but the context of events, thoughts and progress. So, so thank you so much for your presentation. Any, any other questions? All right.
You guys, thanks again. And I know that you're doing an outstanding job and hanging there, and I'm sure that you will be greatly enriched as a result of your experiences.
Thank you so much, Leonard.
Thank you, sir.
Have a best day.
Your time today. And let me just say, you can't see him, for those of you who have not met Leonard, but if he had said he just had his seventy-first birthday, I wouldn't have believed it. So, well done, sir. Well done.
Eighty-first.
I know, that's what I'm saying. If you had even said ten years younger, I wouldn't have believed it. Fantastic. Okay, so now we'll move to item eight on our agenda, comments by board, staff or citizens. And I guess Carrie and Mark, you'll let us know if we have any citizen comment?
We have received no comments.
Okay. Comments by board or staff? Bob?
Yeah, Teresa, I just wanted to say hello to the other board members. Sorry I wasn't able to be with you last month, but I certainly look forward to working with you. This, this will be, as Mayor Norek said, a long but rewarding experience and a lot of work to be done. There are going to be challenges, but I promise you, it will be an exciting adventure to be on. I look forward to sharing that adventure with you. Oh, and I would add too, that you talk about Blind Act of Faith nominating me as as vice chair. I don't know whether to be flattered or or not, but I am, and thank you for that. Look forward to working with you all.
Thank you, Bob. And we missed you last month, but so glad that you're back home and safe and with us back in our community.
Well, thanks. Looking forward to the time that we don't have to do this virtually and we can all get together and give each other hugs or something, so it'd be nice.
Absolutely. Daisy?
Yes, Bob, can you tell us a little bit about yourselves? We had introductions at the last meeting, so I think it'd be nice to know a little bit more about you.
Oh, well, I've got a nearly seventy-four year history to share with you, but in a nutshell, born and raised in Shawnee, went to undergrad at Northwestern University in Evanston, Illinois, came back to OU for law school, served as a GAG officer in the Marines for a while, and came back in the mid-seventies, have been practicing law with, initially with the Andrews-Davis Firm for twenty years, and then now with Hall Estel for twenty-five years here in the city. Married, have an adult son, he's still a bit of a special needs kid, lives at home with us, have a daughter who's married and has blessed us with two beautiful granddaughters, she and her husband live in Plano, Texas. That's, that's about the sum total of it, so.
Daisy, this is Mark. The one thing that Bob didn't mention and should have, he's one of the leading lawyers in the United States on First Amendment issues. People come to him all the time.
Yes.
All right, you're very kind, Mark. Thank you.
No, you're very good, Bob. So, thank you, thank you, Daisy. I appreciate you asking Bob to to introduce himself a little bit more. Other, other comments or by the the board or staff?
I have, I have a few things that that I'd like to say. I apologize for the technical issues. We've got three, sometimes four different platforms that we're working on, and sometimes the the bandwidth here in the building that we're in can get overwhelmed because we have so many people doing this and working from from home. So bear with us, we'll try to get all those ironed out. The whole point with the presentations, as you said earlier, was to give you an idea of each of the sixteen projects and how they were brought to council. So for the rest of the year, probably, you're going to be seeing these presentations, and they're in no particular order, other than how I feel like, the the links of them and how they relate work in a meeting. So one month you're going to see parks, and that'll include youth centers and wellness centers, all the things that are kind of related to that subject. So again, there's no particular order to those coming in. And then also, the presentations that you're seeing are on that thumb drive that we gave you in the resource guide, so you can review those, look at them, or even review them ahead of time. So you can review those, look at them, or even review them ahead of time if you want. They're all in that drive. I do want to report also that the, the authorization that you gave us last month to start negotiations with ADG for the program consultant was approved by council. And we began those authorization or those negotiations. And my, my intent to bring that to you as a contract next month, we'll do everything we can to make that happen so we can get up and running on this project. So if there's any questions, I'll, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions for David?
We went over the resolution and as we, as we go, I, I had some questions after going over the resolution. If I have, I, I did come up with several questions that mostly have to do with background. And I wouldn't want to take up a lot of time during our meetings, asking questions that people might already know the answers to. So if I have a few questions about what I saw in the resolution or things that just pop up, should I contact you, David, or is there somebody?
Yes, send it to me and Laura McGivitt and I will, will answer your questions, our attorney.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Glad to.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments? Okay, seeing none. Our next meeting is September third, which again is the first Thursday of the month at ten thirty. And if you need to practice getting on these two platforms, but otherwise our staff is just outstanding at, as they, as we noticed today with the technical support and getting us all on board. So if I see no other business for today, will adjourn us. Y'all stay safe and see you in a month.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone.